All right, I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May 26, 2020. We're going to go through the first two items on the agenda and then I'm going to give some instructions for new participants. So please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Morone? Morganstein?
Here.
Thank you. Chertel?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Who's here?
Zandry.
Thank you, Jason. Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
And Jim Bowes?
Present.
And Attorney Farrell, Sr.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to give an introductory announcement. For the regulars, I apologize for the redundancy and for those new to the meeting, please pay attention. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also, kindly keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. Madam Clerk, I see Counselor Morone has just logged on.
Thank you.
The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through and be heard and recorded at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. If you are in the midst of an exchange with someone, please allow them to finish their speech. I don't have a wooden gavel. You wouldn't be able to see it. But instead, I do have a mute all button. If people are not participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so that the person who has the floor can be heard. We will now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment about a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look in one of the top corners of your screen, you'll see a text cartoon bubble. Click on that icon, you'll see a chat bar appear on the side of your screen. And please type into that strip that you have a request to speak. All speakers, please identify yourself, name and address. For the record, very important. I will first look to participation from those who are using a computer or a smartphone. Once I've heard from all of those logged in digitally, I will then go through the telephone callers. And once again, if you do comment, please start by saying your name and address for the record. Onto item three on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Did you get the second, Madam Clerk? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has moved passes. Onto item four, which is items removed from the consent agenda. There were no items removed from consent. And we are on to item five, the fire department. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $54,500 with $7,500 from overtime, $24,000 from wage differentials, $23,000 from other pay, and $54,500 to replacement pay.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Tom, can you say the amount again? You cut out just as you were saying the total amount.
$54,500.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Hyde Guard, I think I see you here.
Good evening, thank you, yes.
And what can you tell us about this?
So this is the second time that we're transferring within our payroll. This is due to the same factors that played into the first round. And that is that we've through attrition gotten down to the new set of numbers for staffing with the new model that we're rolling out on July 1st. So we went down from 63 positions to 56 positions. And that's basically put our alignment within the payroll lines in the wrong places. So we have extra money in general wages and in the other categories that we're looking to transfer tonight, overtime, wage differential, other pay, moving it to replacement pay because those unfilled positions are filled with overtime. So this was a given, a known process that we're going to go through to get to the end of the budget year when we transition over on July 1st.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions for Chief Hyde Guard? I see none from the council. Any members of the public have questions regarding this item? And I am just going to check the telephone. Any questions regarding this item from the callers? All right, roll call vote, please.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yeah.
Is Morone here? Morone?
His audio's not working. It looked like he said yes. Can you give us a thumbs up, Joe? Thank you.
Yes?
Yes.
I didn't get to hear that, but all right. Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Test is still not in, right?
Right.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
So the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. And on to item six, which is our regular report, now regular report from Mr. Civitelli from the Health Department.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how are you?
I'm doing fine, how are you, Mr. Civitelli?
Good, thank you. Good evening, council members. I will try and keep it brief because I know that there is a long agenda tonight. So I'll dive right into it based on what we're seeing right now for community-based numbers and comparing April to May, our numbers have dropped dramatically. We have a 50% drop in our long-term care facility case numbers and a 60% drop in our community case numbers. So we've been trying to break those up just so we have a better idea of where our case numbers are actually falling. So that was some positive news for us. As we all know, the peak was in April and as we've moved through May, again, we've seen some pretty dramatic drops in the number of cases here in town. So that's very good for us. More recently, as I'm sure Tim Ryan could speak to in his report next, we've been working a lot with local businesses. We have 400 licensed facilities here in town between restaurants, salons, nail facilities, et cetera. And we're trying to get everybody open as fast as possible. So that's been our goal. Our sanitary staff have shifted back to doing more of their regular operations to try and get back to some sense of normalcy and to try and generate an ability for these facilities to open up quicker. There was a lot of questions about how that would look for them, so we've been trying to make that work well for them. So we've had a lot of activity there. We're still working on our pod planning. I think we spoke about this in the past few meetings. The points of dispensing is our mass vaccination model, so we're still looking at whether or not something may be available in late fall or early next year. But you can never start planning too early for something of that nature, so we're starting to compile necessary PPE, et cetera, and looking at our planning to make sure that that will work efficiency if and when we need to execute that plan. We're scheduling our public flu clinics and our town-wide flu clinics earlier this fall. We're looking at doing it later in September, early October, as opposed to late October, early November, based on the potential concern around fall wave that's being described by some epidemiological studies. So we're trying to move up our flu clinics earlier in the season to potentially stay away from that potential fall wave. Just a few other things of note, at this point, until June 20th, public pools are still closed, as per the executive order. That was one thing we were recently able to clarify. And more recently, we've been spending quite a bit of time, as I'm sure many of you have heard about the contact tracing, that being a large piece, contact tracing and testing being the two major things regarding opening the state. We have five registered users with the new system that the state has purchased, a Microsoft operating system that allows us to do contact tracing more efficiently. So we've been trying to get through that process right now, training our staff. And my understanding is that the star point for that was going to be June 1st. So, and between that and some relatively good news from CDC, which I'm not sure if any of you saw recently, I know there's a lot of concerns in the community and across the country about how the virus spreads. And we know that there was a recent report out by CDC talking about person-to-person spread is the most prominent spread. And I know a lot of folks were concerned a lot about surfaces and how touching surfaces may generate more spread of the virus. And I could report that CDC has a list of things, ways in which the virus does not easily spread. And one of those ways was from touching surfaces or other objects. So that was something that was not relieving to a certain extent because I know a lot of us are concerned about touching surfaces and obtaining the virus through that means. And while it's still of concern, it maybe wasn't as big of a concern as it was initially. So that's something I was happy to report on to this group. And at that, I will defer any questions, comments from the council.
Thank you. You started off by talking about the percentages and how they are decreasing. Is that, when you're reporting the decrease, are you reporting the decrease in new cases?
Correct, yes, Mr. Chairman. The cases are dropping in new cases. So we tried to step away from looking at the total case numbers because that could somewhat be misleading. Because when you hear, oh, well, you know, the town has 451 cases, that's spread out over, you know, the last two or three months. It's not compressed into a small time period of just May. So we're trying to separate it out to say, okay, this is what we had for March, April and May, and we've been tracking it in a manner to say, okay, from April to May, we've had a 50% drop in new cases for long-term care facilities and a 60% drop in new cases for community, for community-level cases. So that was reassuring.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. First up, I have Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Civitelli. So with those figures, Mr. Civitelli, do we have any accurate data as to what percentage of people tested are false negatives?
I do not have that information available to me in the reporting system that we use from the state of Connecticut, no. I do not have that.
Cosmetically, I've heard it in any range of 30% or higher. So most of my questions pertain to us having opened up and hoping that people are still being sensible. Uptown, at the center of town, I've actually reached out to, I'd sent an email to you and heard back from a sanitation worker. I spoke with the building department and I did not manage to reach the police chief. I myself, and I've heard from other people, concerns regarding the distancing of outdoor dining and pedestrians. So for instance, Center Street at North Main Street, Michael's, and then North Main Street, Archie Moore's, the amount of sidewalk space, given that there's trees and light poles, is far less than ideal and certainly less than any six feet spacing. Some possibilities that I and other people have thought about, and again, I did not manage to reach the chief, were, is there a way to have pedestrians cross? And if you're pedestrian-only and you're heading past those places, cross the street and be walking, not where the restaurants are? Is that anything that, there had been any talk of?
I would probably defer to Chief Wright on your question regarding doing something of that nature. At this point, we've been trying to focus more on the distancing within the table setups. I know that we have a downtown ordinance for separating distances, which somewhat complicated, was complicated by the executive order. Our normal ordinance allows for three feet of distance separating, where the executive order pushed that number to six. So that's something that we're going to have to look at moving forward.
So certainly, the, you know, restaurants and, you know, again, in talking with the building inspector, the goal certainly has been, you know, the businesses and keeping things open and working and all of that. But again, I attempted to reach the chief, but I was late in the day due to my own schedule and did that today. So I will take that up with him, but I just wanted to throw that out to you as well, that, again, a six-foot distancing, people walking past is outright impossible in those areas. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is that the mayor and yourself sent a letter requesting hair salons, being upset with the hair salons having been pushed off. And I'm just going to make a request of you, as I had of the council, making a request of the mayor. It seemed like an important enough thing that it would have been nice as a member of the council to have seen that letter before public people. Again, you were the second signature, so I wouldn't have expected you to be the determination of that, but I just want to put that there. And then I just want to ask, I would assume that you are going to be sticking around for Mr. Fishbein's item?
Yes, I was going to stay around for Counselor Fishbein's item. And in regards to the notice that was sent out about the salons, we worked really hard with our local operators to get them ready for that May 20th date. And some of the concerns we had, which is why we signed on to that notice, there didn't seem to be a public health implication for not allowing that to move forward. We had not received much guidance from the state as to why that wasn't going to be permitted. So that's why at that point, I know many health directors felt the same as we did that. The May 20th date was within reason if you could meet the requirements set forth in the executive order for safe spaces. So that's really all we were trying to articulate in that notice.
I thank you, sir, for all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Steve. Beautiful day. First of all, Steve, I want to thank you because I think the environment thanks you for the first week in a while now. I didn't get litter in my driveway. And I know you worked very hard on coming to an agreement with the littering company. And I thank you for your efforts and hopefully we don't have to deal with that in the future.
Thank you.
What?
No, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, no problem. So you mentioned the contact tracing and, you know, one of the aspects of contact tracing, my understanding is that somebody who tests positive in the future would, through some query, indicate to government who they've been in contact with, with the intent of having those people followed up with to see if possibly those individuals have contracted COVID also. Is that fair to say?
I would agree with that statement, yes.
So you indicated that there's been training with regard to this. And what is your training saying when somebody says, none of your business? What are you as a government official charged with doing?
That's a great question. I think a lot of us have asked that question because we've never done it en masse like they're describing now. And in my opinion of contact tracing is you do contact tracing when you have a limited number of cases. Whereas statewide, we still have a decent amount of cases to the point where it's going to be hard to do efficient contact tracing. I think personally, maybe it's a little early for that in the way that they're trying to do it, because it's more effective if you have 400 or 500 cases across the state. But if you have 7,000, 8,000 cases you're trying to follow up on, it could get, logistically, it could be very difficult to do. I think the intent is if you have an individual who tests positive, you would notify that person that obviously at that point they should quarantine for the 14 days. And any of their potential exposures or any close contacts would be notified as appropriate. So I do believe, as you stated, there is that going to be that potential where people are not going to want to comply with that.
And is the training addressed what do you do when that happens?
No, at this point, we've only had one-hour webinar training, which has not provided us much information at all. The system in and of itself was supposed to be fully operational on May 20th, and now we're talking about early June. My suspicion is, is that it's going to be a slow rollout over the next five to seven weeks. And I think a lot of the bugs in the program are going to get worked out as time goes on, from what we're seeing. I do have, we do have a launch page where we would go in all the cases that we would be following up on, based off the electronic system we're already using. So it just takes those cases in the electronic system, transfers it over to this Microsoft-based program. And it's kind of what we're doing already to a certain extent, but we're doing it by phone calls, as opposed to doing a text or an automated phone call.
And then how far is contact tracing supposed to go? Like, I understand the personal contacts, I went and visited my sister, that kind of stuff. But are you supposed to ask, like, what stores they've gone to and then go to the store and find out who was occupying the store at that particular time? Is, I mean, to what extent does contact tracing become what somebody envisions?
Yeah, so I look at it as there's limitations to it. And we don't want to overextend ourselves to try and, I don't think we would get to that point to know what store they were in. I think the intent would be is to know, we've heard about the close contacts, and the definition of a close contact is spending 15 minutes with a person within six feet. So a lot of those times, it'll be a close contact in the home, or maybe a coworker would probably be the most likely at that point. So we really envision it being, I don't envision it being as intrusive because I think more times than not, the close contacts are going to know who they are, especially now with everything being, with the awareness in the community. So my hope is, is that we're, it's not as intrusive as it sounds.
Okay, I hope not. But we have three golf courses here in town, and are they all open?
I know, I believe two of them are open. Yeah, I believe, I know of two of them being open.
Okay, and what are the criteria by which they're open? Because, I mean, is it still the five-person thing? Is it, you can't play in a foursome? I'm hearing all these different things. I haven't had time to go play golf, so I don't know.
It is very conflicting. They were one of the deemed essential services, was my understanding, if they kept a six-feet distance from each other while golfing. And again, a lot of this, when you're looking at six-foot distancing of splitting hairs, it's very difficult to determine how that's being enforced and how people are respecting those guidelines. It's very difficult for us to evaluate that.
Okay. And then our nursing homes here in town, I saw some very alarming numbers. And I know the governor of New York is under investigation for funneling people to nursing homes and they ended up passing away. I see a very large number of Regency House. Do you concur?
At this point, yes, Regency House has, if you're looking at the number of fatalities, they have the most at this point. I know that they have been inspected multiple times by the state health department as well as the National Guard. So that I can say, yes.
I think the percentage is close to 80% of the individuals there that tested positive have passed away. Is that fair?
I don't have it broken, the numbers broken out in that way. What I do, what I can say is that if you're looking at the fatalities in town, 97% of the fatalities have come from a long-term care facility and 3% have come from the community.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the numbers that DPH put out last week.
Okay.
Regency had 130 beds and apparently 81 of those people have passed. Is that, am I reading something wrong or?
No, I don't believe they've had 81 fatalities, no.
Okay. Let me, let me go back, it's.
Maybe 81 positive cases.
Yep, and then I'm just, I'm scrolling pages here. Of the 81, 29 have passed. And then compare that to Skyview, which had 57 positive, but only five had passed. Is there something unusual about Regency that we need some attention there?
So early on in the event, we had had our public health nurse do daily check-ins with the staff at all the long-term care facilities, Regency, Skyview, Quinnipiac Valley Center, as well as Masonic and Gaylord. And it's interesting in that Regency didn't have cases early on. And then, as you know, a lot of these facilities were close to the public from visitors. And the question always became, how do these cases come into the establishment? And we know now you have asymptomatic carriers from, would you would assume would be workers. And you had the perfect storm of asymptomatic carriers and a lack of PPE that really contributed to, I think, a lot of the issues that long-term care facilities were seeing. That really contributed to, I think, a lot of the issues that long term care facilities were seeing. So I I think that that's I couldn't single out one specific facility. I don't have a copy of the inspections from the state. We did request them. So at this point, we're waiting to receive those back.
When did you last request them?
I would say two weeks ago.
And how long does the usual turnaround on getting that information?
I normally haven't requested that information until more recently, so I'm not sure exactly how long this would take.
Okay, just wanted, you know, thank you for sending out the letter. I've gotten quite a few hair cutting hairdresser places that have contacted me for the same reason as well as other business people. So totally agree and you know, consistency and proper decision making puts confidence in government. So I thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Fishmine.
Any other questions from the council? We do have a question or comment from Middle High Cofer. Would you, Ms. Cofer, would you like to unmute your mic and make that comment yourself?
Sure. I was just wondering, as I keep reading numbers in the record journal about the four communities or three around us in Wallingford. I was just wondering, we have much fewer cases than Meriden, excuse me, but almost as many fatalities. And I was wondering if if there's reason you could explain that? Is it is it just the sheer number of elder care facilities that we have? Or is it the the way of testing?
When you're looking at the number of fatalities you're referring to. I think what we're seeing is is that it's very hard for us to quantify that in that we don't know the preexisting conditions of the individuals who are in these homes. So again, it's very hard for us to try and quantify and compare towns to towns or even facility facility at this point because we don't know the baseline health information of those who had had unfortunately passed. So we were just trying to in our interviews with the administrators and the infectious control nurses in the facilities daily. We were focusing on, you know, PPE, all the line lists of where people were going, if they were moving individuals around appropriately. And then I think what happened was as time went on and you started to see more fatalities and we had actually requested in mid April for inspections of our facilities based on the number of cases and fatalities we were seeing. And I think some of the outcry from some of many of the directors of health in towns prompted the state to step in and start doing inspections. But it's very hard for us to to at this point try and quantify the fatalities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Any other questions for Mr. Civitelli, our health director? Anyone on the telephone have a question for Mr. Civitelli? All right, thank you for showing up to our meeting again, and thank you for all of your work in the current circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess we'll talk to you again in a bit.
Thank you.
All right, up next is item seven, which is a report from the EDC regarding the economic impact of COVID-19 on the business community requested by Counselor Todd. I believe, Mr. Ryan, you're here to deliver that report.
Hi, ma'am, Mr. Chairman. There you go.
You can go ahead unless Counselor Todd wants to give any introductory remarks. No, the floor is yours, Mr. Ryan.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to thank the council for inviting me to address you tonight and specifically I'd like to thank Counselor Data for inviting me to do so. So the question at hand, as I understand it is, what impact will COVID-19 have on Wallingford's economy? Well, the quick answer is, I don't know, I'm not sure anybody really knows at this point. There are far too many unknowns to make any type of a, you know, formal determination. So my goal tonight is to leave you with with some thoughts from my perspective. There's not going to be a lot of absolutes, but I will leave you with some thoughts to ponder. I'm just going to run through some bullet points here. So I think we'd agree that there's more economic uncertainty than there is certainty at this particular point in time. That is seldom a welcome signal in business. For example, the stock markets are rebounding while large companies around the country are laying off thousands of workers. Very mixed signals from on a business front on a daily basis. Just talk about there being a quick economic rebound. In many cases driven by pent up demand. Well, that's possible in some sectors, but it also would possibly be overshadowed by, you know, by consumer fear. So I'm not so sure I buy into that. That either. Now, we have many manufacturers that supply the aerospace industry, for example. Airlines have canceled orders for new planes. Planes that are in the air need fewer repairs because they're flying a lot less miles. That does not bode well for the supply chain manufacturers that we have in Wallingford. If I were a betting man, and I assure you that I am not, I'd anticipate local economic struggles in at least the next year before I bet on any type of economic stability or any level of resurgence. In my opinion, the signals clearly point in that direction. But just to give give my comments some perspective. In five of the last six years, Wallingford has added over 50 new business cards per year. 50 new businesses per year over the last five, the last six years. The one year we didn't hit 50, we had 48. Now, there's of course, there's a natural churn factor like in any community. Where businesses come, businesses go. But you have to replace the businesses that leave or close in order to show any growth. And we've enjoyed yearly business growth. But I I'm troubled to predict that in 2021, we will have fewer businesses than we have in 2020. That should concern us all. You know, in the in sales operations, you talk about the funnel theory. You've got to pour more new business in the top faster than old business runs out the bottom because of that natural churn factor. The concern is, we don't know how many are going to run out the bottom. But I feel relatively confident that we are going to really have a hard time pouring new businesses into the top. And that result is obviously fewer businesses. You know, this this may be an opportune time for me to mention that I am actually an optimist of heart. I think many of you know that. But I'm also a realist. And I think there's a lot of market signals working against us in the short run. Let's talk categorically. So in the short term, I really think manufacturing will be okay. And we have a very strong manufacturing base, as you all know. And by by okay, I mean, you know, they'll get by. But they're not likely to flourish. Now, within the broad spectrum of manufacturing, we've got chemical manufacturing, we've got plastic manufacturing, metal manufacturing. So there are some manufacturers that actually have done relatively well through this COVID crisis. So I hate to paint manufacturing with one broad stroke, but and for the sake of time, I'm going to do that here. But I think manufacturing is is typically they're more accustomed to large fluctuations in their business models. More accustomed to ebbs and flows. Just think again, aerospace and defense. All right, so they kind of build that into the business model. So from a manufacturing standpoint, I think most will weather the storm. Let's talk about retail. I suspect very few people on this on this call tonight will predict a business as usual retail rebound. A long term reconfiguration perhaps. But I don't think it's going to be a business as usual retail rebound. Route five has been so strong over the last five to 10 years. We've had the we had to assemble several parcels of land just to create the opportunity for tractor supply to open up and build that and open up that new store because we had no land. Well, drive up and down Route five and we will see now we now have several vacancies. And I do expect that this to grow quite unfortunately. So about hotels. Hotels have been especially hard hit due to COVID related travel restrictions. We have four, you know, nationally branded hotels at the interchange of 68 and 991. And two more hotels have been approved to be built. At this point, I would suspect that those two hotels will probably not be built in the short run. I'd be surprised if they were. And I think it's quite possible that the four that are there are going to be struggling for quite a while. We're fortunate that they are national brand hotels, so they do have some, you know, mostly private equity and muscle behind them. And I say for last, what has been a challenge for Wallingford for some time now, and that's office, the office market. Now, we've been the victim of a sea change in office use for several years now. Forty years ago, when office workers wanted a more metallic setting, Wallingford was a significant beneficiary as the, you know, office users fled the cities. And we saw office buildings pop up all over Wallingford. Well, as you are well aware, the pendulum had been swinging back in the direction of larger cities for several years now. The suburban office market was extremely soft before COVID. And COVID just dealt with a significant blow. Most every conversation with commercial brokers regarding office space involves less demand. It involves adaptive reuse, which works in some cases. Case in point on Northrop Road, where Northrop Road, where Radial now does a light assembly business where Webster Bank used to have their call center. It's a it's an example of adaptive reuse. You know, the resulting outcomes of significantly, you know, more supply than demand is obviously lower property values. Thus, lower assessments, thus lower tax yields. Which was in fact the case on the building where Radial is and where Webster Bank used to be. So we're trading off higher tax yielding opportunities for lower tax yielding opportunities, but that's what the market, that's where the market demand is. I want to offer two examples. One of them is 101 Barnes Road. Now, that's up behind Edible Arrangements, two buildings up. So many local people refer to it as the Liberty Mutual Building. Although Liberty Mutual is no longer in it. That building was valued at $3.6 million. And it sold in April of this year for 1.3 million. That's a 60% reduction in value. I'd like to offer another example. 35 Thorpe Avenue, which is that very nice stately office building at the Route 68 I-91 interchange. That was valued at $10 and a half million and sold in 2019. This is pre-COVID. For 3.8 million. From a value of 10.5. Another more than 60% reduction in value. Now, I just want to show share, you know, a few details on those examples. Both of the higher evaluations were from 1998. All right, just want to just make that point. So those high evaluations were 20 years ago. My point of bringing this to your attention tonight is that we've been absorbing the lower market values through growing and expanding businesses and categories throughout town. But how are we going to offset the decline expedited by COVID in 2020? In 2021? Business growth over the next few years is going to be very difficult. All right, so 20 year valuations, we've been able to, we've been able to grow by offsetting it by pouring businesses, more businesses into that business funnel. So that in the short run, my message here is it's not going to be that list of businesses to go into the top of the funnel. We're have a few here and there, but it's not going to be 50 new businesses this year. I think we'd be lucky if we have a positive number at all in terms of business, total businesses. So listen, I just want to make it clear, the sky is not falling, right? Wallingford has so many strengths and we were diligently to leverage all of them. The signals, however, suggest that we should anticipate unprecedented uncertainties in this marketplace. And I just want to, you know, want to make those points very strong. You know, some positive notes, the diversity in our tax base by business type and category is a significant strength that will have us weather, has had us weather storms in the past, economic storms, and will continue to have us weather storms. I just want to make, I want to stress again, the sky is not falling. I'm just trying to be as open and realistic in terms of business flow and categories that possibly come with it. Another somewhat positive note, you know, pre-COVID, Wallingford's unemployment rate was right around the 4% range. By mid April, we were up in the 16% range. As of last week, you know, using Department of Labor, most recent Department of Labor unemployment statistics, we're closer to closer to 12%. So at least that trend is moving in the right direction when some of the businesses are beginning to reopen. Now, here's a here's a bit of a market shift, a market change, but you know, flight from larger cities is gaining momentum. People do not want to be in huddled masses. They're really rethinking that whole dynamic. If New York City, for example, is the proverbial pond and we drop that big rock in the middle of the pond, will the ripples reach Wallingford? Could we potentially benefit from people who no longer want to look out their window when they're working from home? And stare at the bricks of a brownstone, but rather look out their window and maybe look into a backyard. You know, this this could be something that, you know, could benefit us and we have got a rise on it. So we're watching it closely. Another very positive note is I have checked with our largest project right now to date, it's an active project, is our $72 million proton beam therapy center that is scheduled to be built up on Northrop Road across the street from the Webster Bank or the now the Radial facility. And that is still on schedule. I checked in with the with the owners of the project quite specifically because we know that that is a joint effort between Hartford Hospital and Yellow Haven Hospital. And we know both of those medical facilities right now financially are taking a haircut in a big way. But the way that this particular deal is structured is that Proton Beam International is actually the project owner and has already raised the the capital to build a facility. And both Yale and Hartford will be tenants and, you know, paying a rent on that facility. So that that project is still very much alive. So I know I've been going on, but I just I just want to close, Mr. Chairman, by I just would like to assure you and the entire council that that we as an EDC are not spectators in this fight. Our work product has pivoted from what was growth and expansion a mere three months ago to one of educator, supporter, and quite often frankly, just a caring shoulder. I mean, we hear some really troubling stories. We're in the process of evaluating the opportunities that may emerge from a significantly larger work from home model. You know, where businesses and employees would benefit from our access to commuter rail. Or prefer to look again, you know, into their backyard as opposed to the, you know, bricks of a brownstone if they're working from home. So with that, I just I just want to again reiterate that, you know, Wallingford was strong going into this. We have the foundation to certainly get through it. In my perhaps not so humble opinion, I would err on the side of fiscal prudence and because of that funnel that I've explained a couple of times in that I don't know, I'm not sure where the businesses are going to come from to feed the top of the funnel. And it has yet to be determined what the bottom is going to look like. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address them if they can.
Thank you. I'm not going to say I'm surprised, but I'm going to say that your report was much more in depth and insightful than I had anticipated. And I mean that as a compliment, but again, I'm not surprised and very it's both sobering and somewhat encouraging. And I appreciate your distinct effort to point out the concerns and the things that we should and the things that we should be somewhat confident about to the extent that we're able. So thank you for that. And with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. And first up is Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for your report. It's definitely a lot of detail. I know you and I talk somewhat frequently. So I was aware of some of this, but other, other info that you brought up, I wasn't quite as aware of. So thank you for all the detail. And thank you to you and the EDC for your work. I know, like you said, your job has shifted from, you know, certainly different from what it was three months ago to what, what you're working on now. So we appreciate that. Um, I wasn't asked about the unemployment and then you, you did cover that. So that's, it's good that it's down four percent from where it was in mid-April. But obviously twelve percent when we were at four percent before this is, is worrisome. But I just, I wanted to have you give this report tonight just so that, you know, everybody can hear what's going on economically in town, especially going into the budgets, I think. And you seem to think too that, you know, this isn't something that's going to maybe clear up this year. We might be going into this, you know, still seeing the effects of this going into next year. So I guess it's to be determined still what the effect of this on the grand list will be. But I just appreciate all of your comments and sharing your knowledge with us tonight. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? And I'm just checking the telephone. Any questions or comments from Mr. Ryan? All right, Tim, thank you very much for your time.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And might you stick around for item number nine?
I will be staying on the line. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to number eight. Counselor Chertel, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one comment, Tim, I expected a detailed report and that's what you gave. Just, just kidding. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I was, you know, thinking about the recent community pool discussions and the vote and everything that went down and really just trying to process it and think, okay, so we're not going to do the project now. We may not do the project for several years, as we've just heard, depending on the local and state national economy. So where do we go from here? And I guess my, my fear was that we don't go anywhere. We just let it go and we kind of wait and maybe somebody puts it on an agenda in a year and we come back to it. And I was really trying to think of a way that, that as a council, we could keep this project, even if it's not happening for a year or two years, keep this project and this focus alive. And the other thing that, that occurred to me when I was preparing for one of the previous meetings, I, I think, as I said, I rewatched the meeting from October tenth, twenty seventeen, when this kind of first kicked off at the council level, the presentation from John Gallak, who was then the director of Public Works. And one of the things that came out of that meeting, which, which I had not remembered really, that struck me as I watched that recording was there was talk of forming a committee. And there was talk of the council being part of being really being the ones that formed the committee. And several counselors, counselor, I believe Counselor Testa, Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Leturno at the time, all made allusions to, you know, this is a great thing and we should form a committee. And then the committee never really got formed on our end. Obviously, there was a committee that was formed and they did great work. So this was all kind of, you know, in my head when I wrote you, Mr. Chairman, that note, the email about maybe forming a committee now. And I did it with some hesitation and I'm still, I'm still even now a little hesitant because, you know, there's an old saying, what's the best way to kill a project? Give it to a committee. And, you know, I really want to make sure that, that we do this responsibly. So I think, I'm just going to give you all my thought process. And as a council, you can, you know, agree with me or think of something better or shoot it down. But, but I'm thinking that there's a few things that I'd like to see us do in the time that we've been given. We'd be given the gift of time now. We don't, we're not under the gun to do this project. We have time. I think really see three, three things. The first involves the current pool. I know in some conversations I've had with, with several counselors privately, there still are some questions about the current community pool, like really drilling down as to what would it really cost to keep the current pool? Line by line, you know, every component from the lane lines to the filtration system to the bathhouses, a life expectancy of what, of what's there now, a cost to replace it if it failed. And taking it all the way, like we know that if we put a shovel in the ground with the current pool, we're going to kick, the pool not be grandfathered. And maybe we'll have to adhere to certain health codes we don't have to adhere to now or regulations like the bathhouses. So understanding that, okay, what would that cost? So really a deep dive, I'm sorry for the pun, a deep dive on the current pool to truly get a cost as to what it would take to keep the current pool, just so we know the number. Because I think that was a hesitation with a couple of counselors who felt like we had some of that, but we didn't have all of it. So that's the first thing I'd like to see this committee just get it all on, on a piece of paper publicly and we can have it and digest it as a council. The second aspect of this involves the new proposed design. I am not proposing, let me be clear on this, the committee that worked on this did a great job. If you're, if you're on that committee and you're listening, I know we have people on the phone. This is not trying to redo that or blow that up at all. This is just trying to keep it alive. But I would like to see us explore maybe some other options within that design that we already have. We paid six hundred thousand dollars for that design, so I'm not really in any, any way proposing we do a new design. But again, what would it cost to get six lap lanes? What would that impact be on the planning and zoning aspect of it? Could we get a bigger splash pad? Just kind of the à la carte things that Counselor Fishbine has talked about, others have talked about, just getting numbers to the best of our ability on this new design, just so we can have a, make an informed decision when the time does come. And maybe exploring some stuff that, that wasn't explored by the existing committee, exploring public-private partnerships. Could, could a local business sponsor a lap lane or sponsor an element in the splash pad? I think some of these questions maybe weren't asked. Or if they were, maybe they were, if they didn't make their way out of the committee, but as we could do those things as the town council. So, and again, it's just information gathering and just really putting those questions to rest. And then I think the third thing is an annual recommendation to, to the, to the full town council and to the public on, okay, this is what the current pool status is. This is what the new pool, these are the options. What do we think? This is, and, and this is the economy as it stands whenever we revisit this. And this is what we think as a council we should do. And understanding that that may be, you know, it, the mayor would have to sign on and obviously that's a big thing. But I think from a council perspective, you know, it takes off the table some of the stuff that I heard the night of the vote. So that way everyone now is on the same page. We have all the facts and you can vote yes or no based on the economy and whatnot. So again, the goal of this is to build on the work of this committee, to build on the work that's been done. There were two prior committees. There've been, I think, three committees in the last thirty years and they've all done great work. But, but they've never had the town council, I think, stepping in like this. I don't think that's ever happened. So I think we can keep it alive as a council for as long as it takes and keep this conversation going. And, and again, I just want to say, it may very well be that we do this and a year from now or nine months from now, we, we form our first recommendation. Our recommendation could be, no, don't do it. There's still, you know, twelve percent unemployment. This is not a great thing to do right now. So if you're listening on the phone or you're watching and you're really in favor of the pool, as I am, understand that this is about gathering information and making an informed recommendation. But I do see this committee, if it is, if that's what, if we do form a committee, I think the recommendation aspect, having an annual recommendation is, is a level of accountability. It forces us to confront this issue and it doesn't let it just go away till somebody wants to put it on an agenda. So if there's a better way to do all of this without forming, you know, I don't love committees either. So I'm open to any other suggestions, but I just wanted to put this out here as a way to keep this conversation going and just to keep an open mind on this property and keep, keep exploring the options. So that's, that's my item, Mr. Chairman. I leave it to the rest of the council to discuss, disagree or agree. Thank you.
Thank you. No counselors chopping at the bit yet, but Mr. Savinelli is on this meeting and he has expressed an interest in commenting. So, Mr. Savinelli, you have the floor for now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think that what Mrs. Chertel was talking about is probably a good idea. I'm not sure if a committee on top of a committee is something that would make this an easier project. However, I'm thinking that maybe if we had a representative, a liaison from the town council, maybe, maybe Mr. Chertel to sit in our meetings, sit down and bring every question that every council member might have from rebuilding the pool, from fixing the pool, giving you all the numbers. You know, some of what's happened here is this is a three and a half year ongoing scenario. We've had some changes in council people, so there's been some things lost here. But, you know, I have a one notebook that's five inches thick. And never mind what I have in my emails regarding the amount of work, information that we have discovered along the way. And I think some of that, if we can share it with the council members who are in doubt and answer any questions they might have to clarify how we made some of the decisions that we've made, having a liaison person might be a good way to view that and have that person bring the questions of the town council to our committee. Your thoughts?
Well, I can think of one person who's really interested in being the liaison. So that's my thought. And, you know, sometimes be careful what you beg for. So thank you for that. I, I think it's probably a relatively efficient way because you, your group did a tremendous job. And I think I've told you that before and, you know, I don't.
Thank you.
I, I think, I think you have a pretty good wheel, if you will, and we don't need to reinvent it necessarily. But, you know, it maybe, maybe what you propose is a can, a solution just as worthy of consideration as Mr. Chertel's proposal. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, Counselor Marone, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, your audio is working.
All right, perfect. So I just wanted to say I'm in favor of this idea. As you know, I was in favor of the pool before. I think that the way that the committee, I think the committee was a great committee and I think it was well run, but I think it was sort of taken over by the administration in terms of the, you know, they would report to us occasionally. So I like the idea that the council is more involved at this from the beginning. And if we don't want to do the pool, we don't think we have the money and that's, you know, completely different discussion. But I didn't hear anyone the night of the vote saying that they didn't want to do the pool. They just had concerns about the economy and so on. So I think that maybe this is a good way to keep it in front of us, keep the eye on the prize to where we want to be. I think it's a worthwhile project. I think the committee did fantastic. I would even be in favor of keeping the same committee, but I think we should have more council involvement in this. I think we let this one get away from us and then it, you know, it hurt us in the end. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everything that was just previously stated. I, I think perhaps the most efficient way to go about this, I don't know that the existing committee, which did a fantastic job, did a lot of work, and I agree with Counselor Marone's review of that situation. You know, if we did a new committee and perhaps that older committee had a couple of pointees to the new committee, because I can't think of the last time that we did a, on the general side of government, a project of this size. You know, on the Board of Ed, we did roofs and that kind of stuff. But on the general government side, this is a very large project. It's the largest project that I can think of since I've been on the council. I would want somebody from the electric division to be part of this. You know, I asked when they came before us about energy savings and that kind of stuff and what they could possibly do. Nobody asked them. I mean, you know, I think that would be a, perhaps a good input for that. You know, perhaps somebody from Public Works, you know, Mr. Volter minus, I want to, you know. But, um, you know, a committee really of the, of the whole town or the, you know, more of a makeup of the town, I think would be a good thing to do here. And as Counselor Marone said, to, to keep the ball in front of us because, you know, I, I do like the pool. You know, the other thing we have hanging out there is I'd still like to get some sort of real report on what it would cost to, to rehab the existing. I think that it's, it's key and crucial to, you know, future discussions because that question mark remains out there. And if that question mark never gets solved, it's always going to be one that raises its head. So those are my comments. And, you know, at this point, I haven't, I haven't heard a motion. So, you know, I would be willing to make one. I know it's Counselor Chertel's item. I don't know if that's his intent. I'll cede the microphone for now. But I would like to make a motion if he's unwilling to. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I think he wanted to hear some discussion before he made a motion and get a sense of, of what the, the majority would support and, and what, with input from Mr. Savinelli, and we're going to hear from Mr. Michaels as well, perhaps what direction the group thinks we should go in. So next up, I have Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to keep it alive. I said a couple of times, this doesn't die or this wasn't going to die. It would only die if we let it. And I think one of these ideas that's been mentioned tonight is, is a good way to kind of keep it alive. I think we already have like a, a town committee with the parking rec established that. I really liked the plan. My only doubt had nothing to do, I don't think the existing pool is viable. I'm not even sure we could open it this year if we needed to or wanted to. And maybe Mr. Michaels, Kenny can answer that later on when, when he speaks after January twentieth or whatever, when the governor's executive orders take effect. My doubts are all, all in the economy. And I was more optimistic an hour ago than I was, you know, forty five minutes ago, whatever, when Mr. Ryan started speaking. But that's just the reality of the situation. And I think it definitely makes it, the decision easier to kind of held off. The, the only gain to going now was to gain a construction year and a year that likely we're going to be closed anyway. We're going to have the pool closed anyway. I, I think we, we do have time on the pool once that kind of gets figured out. But if, if you need people, counselors to be on the committee, I volunteer, I'm interested. I don't like the government either though, but I think if we, we keep the discussion going, it's good. I think involving, like Frank said, maybe not a whole new committee, but some sort of additional participants in and out, such as Public Works and Electric Division, whatever. That could all be good as well. But I'm also, I, that would be great. I think if Counselor Chertel just kind of joined the committee and reported back and let us know what was going on, I think that can be just as effective as a committee of three or four or five counselors. And you have one person kind of committed and giving, bringing back and then the rest of us from there. But I, but I'm, this is, this is moving in some sort of, some sort of direction. I'm an optimist. I hope it goes, comes then years from now, like Counselor Chertel was saying. But, um, but I think the first step to getting there is to have some sort of council involvement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think you almost made a motion to appoint Chertel the liaison and I would have seconded it.
I think, I think more people want to talk. I'm totally ready to do that if, if you are. But I know it's, it's usually good to have a lot of counselors talk and we're not just moving business along. So.
It's fine.
Everybody around first.
Thank you. I'm going to, I have a request from Kenny Michaels, but I'm going to allow Counselor Testa to go first and then we'll hear from Mr. Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I don't, I don't want to see us doing anything to complicate matters. doing anything to complicate matters. Discussions about a new committee which seems kind of unnecessary unless those on the current committee didn't want to continue. But it seems to me that what we really need to discuss is revising or developing a new charge for this committee. That's how this usually works. We can't just say stay around and come back with something that would make a whole lot of sense. I think what everybody thought when this turned out the way it did was, okay, so what's next? Where do we go? And I appreciate Counselor Shortell putting this on the agenda. That's what we should be doing right now as a council. We should be saying, well, we're not going forward with what we chose to do. So where, where are we going? We need to make that decision. We need to talk about it. Say, well, we are going to wait for six months or 12 months or eight, whatever. We have to, we have to put together some type of plan as a council as to what, how we want to handle this. And that could very easily be asking the, the committee or giving the committee a, a new charge. Whatever that might be. Add a counselor to it. I, of course, Counselor Shortell should be that person. That remains to be seen. I don't see the point in building a whole new committee with a whole bunch of new people. What they're able to do is get input from whomever they need to get input from. We should tell them. For example, even if we did not choose to approve the project, we would have gone, responded to them by saying, well, we need you to cut back. A, B, C, D, whatever that might be. We reviewed the bid and say, okay, you need to come back with us, to us with a scaled down version. Or any of those types of things we could have done. What we had chosen to do was to go forward with the project. And, and of course, it was vetoed and we, we didn't override it. So we need to do the same type of thing. Ask the committee to either sit tight, come back with a scaled down plan or several versions of that plan. Tell us what it would take to reopen it next year with no new plan. Whatever we want to learn or know, this group is, is ideally situated to handle it for us. I don't, I'm trying to avoid cliches. We don't want to reinvent the wheel here. They've got all the information they need to come back to us, whatever we ask them for. So I would be in favor of asking them to continue, giving them a new charge, adding a counselor to it if, and that makes sense. As I said, unless they say to us, I'm out. And then, of course, we have to get a new committee. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, you still there?
I'm, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
What do you have to say?
I, I, I would like to echo what, what Counselor Testa said and, and what, what Mike Savinelli has said. I think creating a committee to a committee starts to muddy the waters. It starts to make things more complicated than what they need to be. I do see positivity and I do like the idea of having a liaison that, that is now part of the pool committee that can go back to the council with what we're meeting on, what we're discussing, and kind of has the, the, the wherewithal, knows what's going on within the committee. I do think I'm, I'm fortunate enough to say I can speak for, for most of the people within the pool committee. They see the light at the end of the tunnel. They're at the, they're at the end, but not quite at the finish line. And we are fortunate enough that, that they do want to stick around. They want to see the project completed. Hopefully sooner rather than later. So I don't think we have to worry about any of them jumping ship or departing just yet. It's a great group of people who committed a lot of time, a lot of effort over the three and a half years, as you all have noted. So I, I would like to see as, you know, for our department, for them to finish this through.
Thank you. You know, it, it, it sounds like a great way to go is to appoint Counselor Shortell our liaison, have him meet with the committee and then come back to us and revisit the charge as suggested by Counselor Testa. But I might be just spinning here. So, next up, Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess for Mr. Michaels, just trying to figure out, when this process started, I thought, you know, Park and Rec came to us, pool needs to be redone, we're going to do certain things and we'll be back. How did the committee get created? Because we didn't create it.
That, that was before my time, before I was appointed director. So I can't speak on that. I came into the committee when I was appointed in August of 19.
Right. So then what was the charge?
What was the what?
The charge. We've heard about you getting a new charge. Well, the council never gave you, gave the committee a charge. So what was your understanding as to what the charge was?
I was under the understanding there was a ballpark in, in where the charge for the pool was, was, there was a comfort level.
Who created the comfort level?
Good question.
And that's exactly the reason why I think something else should be done here. Because normally, Mr. Chairman, when we have projects like this, I believe the roofing committee, which is a very large Board of Ed committee, the council created the committee. We have, you know, and, and I believe we created a charge. The, the process that I was led to believe was going to be followed was not followed. I thought that whomever at Park and Rec was going to come back and report to us periodically. We certainly had Mr. Stein early on. I remember he came to us and, you know, told us what we could do and, you know, we sort of gauged our comfort. It's almost like we were the committee. But somehow something different happened. And, you know, that's where I'm uncomfortable. You know, well, I'm, I'm uncomfortable. So I just throw that out there. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Somebody get him a pillow. I am going to go to Counselor Laffin next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know what? Then I'm going to motion that Counselor Shortell serve as our council liaison to the Park and Rec Commission Subcommittee on the community pool.
Second.
Second.
I think we got a second from Zandry and then I, I also heard Counselor Morgenstein. Thank you. And I do, I see that Mr. Savinelli wants to comment and then Counselor Todd has questions on the motion.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Fishbine's question. When the committee was formed, we met with the mayor and the mayor kind of led us down the path of what we should do. And he wanted the Park and Rec Commission along with John Golak to do all the research and do the presentation of the pool based on the knowledge that the people within the Park and Rec Commission had, who thought that would be the best way to go with it. So just to answer that. And our charge was to review the current status of the pool, which we did and which we reported on in 2017 in October, and also to establish what it would take to replace the pool and what some of the newer features we could put in. I, I think one of the things that, that everybody needs to keep in mind is that the current pool was losing its luster and has continued to lose its luster. One of our charges were, was to make this more attractive to our citizens here in the town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Savinelli. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to hear from Counselor Shortell. Well, two questions really. Number one, do you, do you want to be a liaison before we, before we vote on this? Because that wasn't exactly your idea. So I want to make sure that, that you're okay with that. And also because this wasn't your original idea, do you see any benefits to doing this one way or another? Do you, like, is there a benefit to having the council committee as you proposed as opposed to a counselor being a liaison, whether it's you or somebody else? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, before he answers, I'm not sure I care what he thinks about whether or not he can be appointed. I mean, if the majority votes to appoint him, he's got to serve. He, he kind of stood up in front of the firing range. So, now with that, Counselor Shortell.
Yeah, this, this has that episode three, when Anakin gets appointed to the council feel to it a little bit, but I know like three people are going to get that. So, so Counselor Todd, to your points, I'll, yes, I'm happy to do it. I, you know, I don't know that, that one way is better than the other. I could see it both ways. I, I think you, you know, you weren't on the council. I think what you've been hearing from some of the other counselors is a sense of disconnect from the process at some point. And I'm not, again, let me be clear. The old committee was, meetings were open to the public. They, I'm not saying they did anything wrong. I'm just saying that, that I think we as a council at the time kind of sat back. We got some presentations. And then it felt like some decisions were made and we got so far down the path that when, when it was, you know, we, we weren't really, we're kind of locked into a certain path. And, and that kind of, you know, it kind of is what it is. So I think, I'm not trying to, my intention was not to try to redo this whole thing. We, we paid $600,000 for a really good plan. I still think it's a good plan. But just to try to ask some questions, get some information and keep it alive. So I've been, I've been thinking about this, the concept just now of, of, yeah, one of us, if it's me, I can do that as one person and bring it back to all of you. You can ask questions, say, no, that's, you know, no, I don't, I want more. I want to know, you know, to the, you know, cubic leader, how much is the filtration system processing? And I can go back and ask them. So, I mean, I can certainly do it or, you know, three of us can do it. I, I don't know. I think in the end of the day, it probably gets us to the same place. So I'm open to, I, I just want to keep this, really, I want to keep it alive. And like I said, like three years ago, like all I want at the end of the day is I don't want to drive by community pool for the next 40 years and have it not be open. Like have it be nothing. So whatever we do, I just want to, you know, work towards something. So I'm happy to do it. And I think we can keep it alive however we decide.
Yeah, I haven't called the roll yet. And I think the only person who might vote against your appointment is Counselor Fishbine. So I, I think it's pretty well done. Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my understanding, the motion is to put somebody as not a voting member, somebody who doesn't have any authority, but somebody who's going to relate to us what we could read in the minutes. Is, is, am I, is that fair to say?
No, I, I think we're appointing him to be the official thorn in their side.
Well, you know, with all due respect, if I'm going to appoint a thorn in the side, why would you, why would you appoint somebody who loves their plan? Right? That's not putting a thorn in the side, right? That doesn't even make sense. I mean, with all due respect. You know, because, and I'm not lobbying, I'm not campaigning, I'm not, you know. But one of the things that I've been adamantly opposed to is the removal of the senior citizen exercise from this project. I was with a bunch of senior citizens yesterday, not social distancing. We didn't wear masks. And we were talking about community pool. And I explained to them how the pool is going to be so much smaller, we're going to have a splash pad. And they said, well, that's just for kids. I'm not going to use that. And I said, well, you know, there was a plan to put in senior citizen exercise there, but somebody removed it. And they were disappointed. And what I just heard was we want to make community pool available to all people of, of the town. So I think Counselor Shortell is already of the opinion that the plan meets that. I am not. So I have nothing against Counselor Shortell. Perhaps if Counselor Shortell had a vote on the body, that's, that's why I would have more than one counselor involved in this very large project. Once again, not lobbying, not campaigning. But I, I want, I want to see this thing happen for the betterment of, of all of our town. I just don't see putting Counselor Shortell as a liaison getting us all those questions. Although I do have faith that he'll get most of our questions answered. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I actually have a lot of confidence in his ability to listen to us and to ask questions and I, I think he can be difficult at times. I mean, whether, and it might be appropriate in this case. So that having been said, I think we're going to hear from Mr. Savinelli one more time and then the victim wants to talk.
My, my comment regarding being a thorn in our side, I think is maybe a little overstated. What we're looking for is somebody who we could relate to and communicate to. And I think more importantly, have him come to us and say, these are the questions some of the current council members have and you guys need to clarify. And we'll be happy to do that. So we want to work together as a partnership. We think that we have somebody who can communicate with the council, eliminate some of the meetings that we have and put the information down in writing. We're happy to do that. So, you know, we've spent three and a half years on this and hours and hours and hours of our time and visits and field trips. And so we're willing to work and, and give whatever people think they need to see. And it's all available. Believe me, it's all available. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think I referred to him as a thorn somewhat facetiously. So with that, Mr. Thor, I mean, Mr. Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think that being on this committee, I, I would take it very seriously and understanding that I'm representing the council. Let me start with the idea of the, the notion of whether it's a voting member or not. My initial proposal, there was no vote. I mean, it was a three-person town council committee whose only power was the power of the bully pulpit. Ultimately, we're going to make a recommendation and keep it in public eye. We weren't voting. I mean, we were voting on the recommendation. So this notion that whether this person gets a vote or not is kind of irrelevant to me. And in terms of, yeah, I do have biases about this, but I also, in fact, I think it's evident even in my presentation today that I, I am open to, to other things, other possibilities. For example, you know, I noted in my opening comments that the need for a detailed breakdown of the current pool, Counselor Fishbine wasn't even paying attention because then he threw that out there five minutes later as if it had not been said before. So I think preparation is a really important thing. Or like, for example, when Counselor Fishbine claimed we hadn't gotten a comprehensive report on the pool and he's on video in, on October 10th, 2017, thanking Mr. Savinelli for the comprehensive report on community pool. So I think that we do need a counselor, whoever it is, who is well-prepared, who listens to all points of view, which I will do, and won't just ask questions about things or say things that were just said 10 minutes ago. But no, I, I think I, as I also said, and I said this, I think in my comments, which I think is another indicator of my objectivity, it may very well be that, that in my, in my proposal, which we're kind of steering away from, but, but that the committee would recommend not to do it for the same reasons the mayor said not to do it. So I am just trying to get us to a place where we're not asking these questions anymore as a council and it's really just about the project. And trying to factor in all these different points of view. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin, did you have a comment at this point?
Yeah, Craig mentioned the trail again. And I read in one of the minutes that the Wetlands Commission didn't want the trail. It was one of the conditions of, of passing. So that's, that's where it went. I don't remember if I read that in the Park and Rec minutes or the Wetlands minutes or both. But that is my recollection of why that, or where that trail went. It was a condition of approval that there not be a trail. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Todd. I'm sorry.
Planning and zoning meeting eliminated each other.
Thank you, Mr. Savinelli for clarifying. Counselor Todd, you had another question.
Thank you. I'm wondering if, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I'm wondering if we could. I'm wondering if, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I'm wondering if we could maybe do a hybrid of both of the ideas? And maybe we could take Counselor Chertel's idea of having three counselors and we maybe have, or maybe not three, maybe two. But maybe it doesn't need to be one liaison, um, to address Counselor Fishmine's, thoughts that, you know, maybe it's, there should be somebody who's, who wasn't maybe as supportive of the current plan. So maybe, maybe we have two counselors as liaisons or three even, just, just throwing that out there in case that's another option. Thank you.
All right, uh, we've heard from the council. Any comments from the public? And any comments from the telephone? All right, there being none, uh, I bring it back to the council and Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the roll. Please call the vote.
Thank you. Fishmine.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Maron.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
All right, yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
For the record, there's not another person on this council that would have brought up the term cubic leader. So let's just get that clear. Of course, I wrote yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, point of order. I didn't hear how Mr. Counselor Fishmine voted.
He voted yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for all of you who showed up to help us with the pool. We are done with item eight. And on to item nine. And Counselor Fishmine, this was your item, so I'm going to let you start.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, obviously during Mr. Savinelli's very eloquent, um, report, he brought up concerns about the, uh, hairdressers and the, the impact to them. Um, and certainly we've all felt the impacts over the past one and a half or so to our local and our, our state and our national economy. You know, I think that there's a lot of, I don't want to get political. There's a, there's a lack of concrete direction here. And I think that, and, and probably most of you have been contacted by our constituents, you know, what's going on? When are we going to see something change here? You know, it's weird that I can go to Walmart, but I can't go to church. Is that a health decision? I don't know. I don't know what Mr. Civitelli thinks about that. All of the, all of the money that business owners put into, uh, trying to comply with what they thought was going to be an opening last week. And, um, you know, Mr. Civitelli's letter, joined by the mayor, really hits the nail on the head. And, um, you know, I know we do have members from the Board of Education. I think Dr. Menzo is, is on also. I'd like to know where we are with possibly having an outdoor graduation. I did speak with a, um, member of the board event earlier in the week, and they said that's up to the the State Department of Education, but quite frankly, I think we're talking about graduates. So, um, I don't know that they would fall into the Department of Education. You know, I, I know that Dr. Menzo is many times very good about thinking outside the box. I don't see why we couldn't perhaps have a parade for these kids. You know, children are being impacted in this state. They are going to be known as the COVID kids because of how they're treated, you know, their school year, all that stuff. Not being able to walk, you know, towns in Connecticut did have, some had parades yesterday for Memorial Day. We didn't have one. So, you know, I look forward to hearing what, um, the Board of Education thinks we could possibly do. I mean, ultimately, um, and I look forward to hearing what my fellow counselors have to say and perhaps members of the public. But, you know, ultimately, I think we should be going to the law department to draft some sort of a resolution along the lines of what the mayor had in, in the letter. Because that's the mayor's voice, um, asking the governor to, you know, let us do our thing. We have a health director. A very good health director. He knows what can happen, based upon data, based upon his experience, based upon his training. And, um, I certainly have confidence in that at this point. But I think that it would be appropriate for some sort of a resolution. And perhaps, you know, we have a ordinance committee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. Perhaps if Janice can put together some proposed language, maybe we could look at it and, um, you know, vote on it at our next meeting. Because I think the people, our constituents are really clamoring for, um, being able to go back to work. That's, um, you know, I read about people that congregate, you know, six and seven people, um, you know, being threatened with being arrested. I hear about people being released from prison that are dangerous persons. And I get calls from people that just want to go to work. I think we need to do something. So those are my introductory remarks, and I thank you. I look forward to hearing the rest of the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I, I think we'll hear from health and possibly economic development at some point. But I see that Counselor Testa wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, trying to figure out what the point of this is. And I'm, by that, I mean, what, what do you want us to do? What can we do? Because we can, we can pass a resolution that sort of shares the, the thoughts of the council, if you will. We can, we can ask, see, I, as you know, I, I was, I expressed my dissatisfaction that we were not given the copy of the letter that the mayor sent to the governor. However, I did not object to the letter. And, um, and the mayor is fully within his rights to, to draft that letter. And, uh, he didn't need our permission. I just thought it would be nice to have known about it. That was the only objection I had to it. But, you know, we, we're talking about questioning the governor's oversight of the state. It's clear where Counselor Fishmine is on that, given his, you know, the activities she's undertaking and he's free to do all that stuff. If we want to talk about something similar to asking the mayor to draft another letter or pass a resolution that expresses our dissatisfaction with the way things are going, or expresses our wishes that things change, we can discuss that. I might even go along with some of it, who knows? But we, but to, to imply that we could take some type of action, in effect, is to me is, is asking us as a council to, take a stand on whether we want to follow, for lack of a better term, follow the law. If we want to question, ask our law department the question, the governor's right to do what he's been doing, we can have that discussion. But I think we're, I, I, I just don't want this council to be put in a position to assist Counselor Fishmine's actual activities as a state rep. They're two separate things. We want to, if we want to ask the, the governor to, you know, to, to, to change things, go ahead. I mean, send the letter, pass the resolution. But unfortunately, we're not in a position to, uh, have our town manage things differently than the, the, the governor has been, has been asking, has been ordering, if you will, through executive orders, whether we agree with them or not. I don't think that's appropriate for us to be doing that. So I really want to know what the agenda is here. I'll make one comment on the idea about graduation. It's not our job, nor is it our place to insert ourselves into that discussion. Period. We are as far removed from a this, from the decision about graduation as the government agency can be in the way our government is set up. It's a Board of Education decision. If the Board of Education, through the superintendent, would like, wants the town to do something for them, then their avenue is to go to the mayor, who is in a position to make that decision as our chief executive officer. There's nothing we can do other than appear to care, which we all do. The board has made it perfectly clear the path they're trying to follow. And they've decided that they want to wait till June 8th, I may have the date wrong, for the, the next govern, guidance from the state. And at which point they will propose something for, for a graduation ceremony. And it's preemptive for us to, to jump in right now and say, I think we should do this. I think we should do that. For all we know, they'll be able to do whatever they want. And when, when they make that decision and that recommendation, and it may require the mayor to do A, B, C, or D with the town facilities and resources and so forth, then that's up to the mayor to make that decision. The only input we could have is if we had to approve some spending. So I just think it's, it's, it's fine to say I, you know, I'm, I'm, I care, we care about the plight of our students. I'm a high school teacher. I'm well aware of what these kids are going through. And, and following closely to what we're trying to do and what our advisors and administrators and groups are trying, trying to do for the seniors and for the students at, at large. And, um, but I, it just rubbed me the wrong way to potentially say we as a council, you know, have something to say about this. Other than, again, you want to pass the resolution? You want to pass a, a, a thoughts of the, of the council motion, um, that we support? Anything? Fine, go ahead. But, um, a lot of this reeks, I'm sorry, a lot of this reeks of grandstanding to me, and it, it really is under, getting under my skin. So, that's all. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin?
Yeah, thank you. Um, no, I think that we have nine elected Board of Ed members. And Dr. Menzo, as it was cited, um, Dr. Menzo is always thinking out of the box. When even, when we agree or when we disagree, he's always thinking out of the box. And I think, uh, I mean, there's, I don't even think there's an argument to be made. Because we have nine elected Board of Ed members, I think this is totally in their court. There's not a separation from the people or anything like that. They serve the public just like we do. Um, we don't usually get involved in their activities or their decisions, uh, after the budget. That's like it. So I think it should, I think it should just stay that way. And, um, and there's nine of them that we can all talk to if we have serious problems. Uh, and there's nine of them that the people in the public can reach out to if they have problems. But I think, and I, I know pretty much all of the Board of Ed members and Dr. Menzo, I have no doubt that they're doing literally everything they can to make this work out in the best possible scenario. And I just can't even envision a plan, uh, or an idea where any one of those nine and 10 people would, would sit back and, and let something slide on this, or just kind of like, oh, well, you know, the, the governor said whatever and we're done. Um, I'm, I know they're going to, they're thinking about whatever they can do, and they're doing the best they can. And I think, uh, I think, uh, kind of like Counselor Testa said, I think we need to just defer, uh, to the Board of Ed and, and let them handle it. Thanks.
Counselor Fishmine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I don't disagree. The, the Board of Education has the ability, and they have done that. You know, the, the problem is, is that absent action by the executive branch, the Board of Education would be planning a graduation at this point. So I only mentioned a resolution, no matter what Counselor Testa may have thought, I said, a resolution to request that there be some more local oversight here. That something happens quicker than June 20th. Because I'll tell you right now, we have restaurants in our downtown, our beautiful upper downtown. Stones throw away from here, they will never open again. Not because of something they did. And we have restaurants that are ready, willing, and able to open tomorrow under the guidelines that they're saying are going to be in place on June 20th. Just asking for the ability through resolution, which is we have the power to do, to go to the governor and say, Wallingford is ready to reopen. Not to defy the law, but to pass a resolution. That's it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We do have the Board of Ed Chair in attendance, and she has asked to speak. And I'm going to go to Ms. Levac because I don't have any counselors knocking on my door at the moment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, we have had a number of ideas and suggestions from students, parents, and community members regarding graduation plans. And, you know, clearly I was interested in this town council agenda item since it involves graduation from our school. Just to give you a little background, per our policy IKFB entitled graduation exercises, and in conjunction with the state and local officials, graduation plans are being formulated, keeping in mind that we must comply with all legal requirements that force to address the COVID-19 safety issue. This has been a, a very stressful time for everyone in our community. And, you know, the, the Board of Education, we very much appreciate the patience and kindness that all persons involved have displayed. With that being said, we are looking for additional guidance, uh, as it comes down from the state, the governor's office, what have you, as to changes in the restrictions. So we have made a decision to wait until the week of, uh, June 8th to get further direction. And then move forward on a decision for, uh, graduation plans. And, you know, perhaps, uh, Dr. Menzo, um, might have something else to add, um, to my remarks, but that's where we are, and we are taking into consideration. And we are being sensitive as to all of the, um, suggestions and ideas that have been made. They, they have been shared with all Board of Education members and the superintendent. So, thank you for allowing me to remark on this.
Thank you. Dr. Menzo, I think she's called your name.
Yes, I'm here. So I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this up this evening. It is a tough decision. And it is a tough conversation. Just so you know, and I think many people do know, if you follow what we're doing in the school district at all, we've been meeting with students, the principals of both high schools, and I have been meeting with students now for the past month or two, actually, to talk a little bit about the end of the year activities. Because it's not just graduation. We also had to go through the senior prom scenarios, the award ceremonies, you know, the whole senior skip day, basically, you know, that's a whole another scenario, a variety of different things. And so we wanted to meet with the students. We wanted to hear what they were saying. They were very, very, very mature, the counselors and the advisors that worked with the senior class were incredibly supportive. So we were able to navigate through the initial activities. We decided to press pause on, on graduation because again, with the executive order that's supposed to be coming out or the new one that's supposed to take place June 20th, we know that based on phase two and phase three openings, there's an expansion of opportunities potentially for our students to have a more traditional graduation. So that is our goal. But we didn't want to prematurely, like other districts for other reasons, have put out ideas. And we didn't want to unnecessarily incite people in a bad way or encourage people in a, in an unfortunate way that might not work out. So we have been working behind the scenes on a variety of different ideas. The key thing is that we're working with the police department, the fire department, and health department, and actually even Attorney Small. Because we do want to make sure that whatever end up, whatever ends up going forward as potential options or an option or multiple options does comply or do comply with state law, as Ms. LeVak said. So we've been working, we've had several meetings with all the departments. Mr. Civitelli has been incredible with his support to make sure that, you know, we're following any idea that we have, we bring to him, the police chief, the fire chief, both have been integral members of the team as well as course building administration. So we do want to honor the students. I've been messaging this all along. We do two messages every week. I do two messages to all families every week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Principals are sending out messages at least once a week. We want to make it special, but we also, you know, want to make sure that we can comply with what is necessary for public health and safety. One of the ideas we had, but unfortunately this has been postponed as well, is we were going to request that the students, because we know many colleges and universities are questionable about going back, were to march in the 350th Day Parade if it occurred in September, like it had been postponed to. That was one of the ideas that had been mulled around and having them in their cap and gown and be part of true ceremony in celebration on that day. Unfortunately, that again, has been postponed to next June of 2021. So that complicated that fact. But we are working very closely. I'm confident that what we come up with will be special. And again, I think right now we're, we're hopeful. If you look at phase two and three, there are some interesting items on there. I do participate in all the governor's conference calls on Wednesdays at five o'clock, five to six. And so I do listen very carefully. David Lehman, the Commissioner of DCD spoke last week about phase two and there's the whole concept of the movie theaters opening. And we're curious, what is the capacity? That question was asked. They haven't determined if that's 50% capacity, if that's 25% capacity, what does that look like? So you can kind of think about if that were something as a viable option, not necessarily movie theater, but other locations, how we can potentially utilize that. So that's why we decided to wait to the week of the 10th, when I did the math backwards. Every time the governor basically goes for a reopening or a big proclamation, it's about eight to 10 days prior to that. So we figured out that we were going to go that week so we can get the best information. A lot of school districts, I've just been getting emails tonight, a lot of school districts aren't hold just like we are. They have some interesting options. Our surrounding communities had a conference call with superintendents from Meriden, Cheshire, Southington last Monday. And there's some interesting ideas, but none of them have set any formal plans at this point. A lot of districts are waiting to potentially do something in July or August because they believe that the state will continue to open. Because if you know, if you've seen the latest governor's documents, the executive orders will change June 20th on or around. And then about four weeks later, when you look at what's slated to happen in mid-July, if, if everything goes well, the state is fairly open as a, as a state. There obviously are guidelines, but it's fairly open. So again, we're trying to take it slowly because we didn't want to come out with a decision like some districts. I just got texted that a district already did their graduation. And to be honest, they might have done it in a more restrictive manner than we might need to do. So we want to honor our students and honor our families. And I, I do appreciate everybody's support because I know that this is all coming from a place where people want to support the students. Our students are so important to us. And they really did get a short end of the stick, so to speak, as seniors graduating and not have all these experiences. And then some of them potentially not even be able to start their first semester in college on campus, depending on where they're going. That's not fair. These students don't deserve that. So we're going to do whatever we can, but we have to be safe and we have to be within the law, be it from the governor or be it working with local officials.
Thank you, Dr. Menzo. I, I've been listening to your and Board of Ed Chair LeVak's comments. And I do think that the council wants to support graduation. I don't think we want to plan it for you. So with that, I have been told that Counselor Morganstein will speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Menzo. Yeah, so I'm the one medical provider here in the room. And I would be completely unwilling to sign any resolution that questions the governor who is listening to his health departments and his scientists. And as we open, here's what I see. I see more people coming out. I see people feeling that it's reasonable now to take your elderly along with you to your office visit or your small child along with you to your office visit. This gradual opening that is well thought out, but is well publicized also on the news, has a lot of people thinking, oh, it must be going away. Well, we still have the asymptomatic carriers. We still have people who, if, if it's being brought to them by someone who is not taking proper precautions, are facing life and death. Every day I go to work, I have to worry about my 94-year-old father-in-law who lives in my home. I have to worry about a family member who's preparing for major surgery that I could be bringing at home. I would not want to be having to face questioning, opening up further. Again, yeah, fine, let's make a good plan. But I really like this idea of it needs to be done in a proper timeframe. Let's see what this partial opening does. Because I suspect we're going to see our numbers go up. And the year 1918 comes to mind. And so I wasn't sure I was going to speak because I have just kind of had it. Every day I go to work and I have to worry that I'm taking it home. I have to go to work. I have to take care of sick people. But I do not have to have a haircut. I'd love to have a massage. You guys would all benefit from that. My stress level would be much lower if I were getting a regular massage. But I'm not. And so that, that's what I have to say. And unfortunately, it, it kind of is political when it should not be. People who are not taking this seriously are putting others at risk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I haven't had a haircut since early March. Counselor Fishbine, you're next.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So people make things political because, you know, the fact of the matter is the governor elected by the people said to hairdressers, come up with this criteria, spend all the money you can open. A group that represents itself to represent hairdressers lobbied the governor, politics, and got him to change that. If you look into that group, they don't represent hairdressers. They were recently formed. So as I said, I don't want to get political here. But those are the kinds of decisions that leaders should not be making. People's livelihoods are on the line. And all we're saying here is if, what's going to change on June 20th? Our health director, Counselor Morganstein mentioned the governor is relying upon professionals, health professionals. Our health director is in line with what I've said here tonight. Our health director signed a letter saying that the hair places should open. That's relying upon the professionals. The governor recently fired the reopen Connecticut Advisory Group, that group that he created. Politics. Not here. Somewhere else. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reach out to the Law Department to draft a resolution. I know Attorney Small is not on the call, but perhaps she can get access to our discussions here tonight to try and put some language together so that we can address it in the near future as, as your, as you determine to be appropriate. That's my motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
A second.
Executive by Counselor Chertel. Is there a discussion on the motion? There is a request to hear your motion again, Counselor Fishbine.
Sure. That we reach out to the Law Department to put together a proposed resolution in line with asking the governor to consider opening Wallingford on a more expeditious manner, giving more local control to our health department and relative professionals of the like. I think that's clear, Mr. Chairman. So.
Counselor Chertel, does your second stand? Second stands. Okay. Counselors, Andrea has a question, then we'll go to Counselor Tessa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Fishbine, can, can you just help me understand a little bit? I just want to make sure I understand exactly what it is that you're asking us to consider. So you're basically asking us to kind of, if, if this passes as a group, to basically have a letter sent saying, look, we support getting the businesses open on whatever timeline that the state is outlining. In other words, I, I want to make sure that I understand that what you're asking us is to support a methodical opening based on the instructions that the governor is outlining. So as an example, if he outlines that, that certain criteria has to be met by June 1st and that it's met, Wallingford wants to be in support of allowing those businesses to open. Similarly, if another tier is set for June 20th and another tier is set for July 20th, basically what you're trying to get is a letter saying, look, we want to be able to take a stab at these requirements, meet them, and open unfettered. Is that really what you're asking us to do in, like in a letter of support to the governor?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I, I think it's a little bit more than that. You know, the, the governor through DCD has already put out guidelines for June 20th. You know, businesses are saying, you know, I can comply tomorrow. You know, why do I have to wait for June 20th? I'm not saying to have, you know, a revolt, revolution, or anything like that. But, you know, to say to the governor, if we have businesses that are willing to comply with your criteria and our health department is okay with inspecting that criteria that's supposed to be in place, let's say June 20th, just using that as a date, that the governor considers allowing businesses to open earlier. That's it. Standing up for our businesses, not, not in a, not a disrespectful manner, but just in a more more local control. I think Steve Civitelli has got a good handle on this. And that's all. To answer your question.
Okay, thank you. So I, I, again, because I want to be able to, to think this in my head. So you're actually almost saying that you would like to try to support it a step further. In other words, if small business A said, look, I can maintain my customers in my shop six feet apart, they're going to wear the masks, but I'm not allowed to open until June 20th because I'm in the second group. I, I want to open now. Why can't I? Is, is that more of what you're doing here?
Yes, exactly. And one of the examples I give to you is I can go right now and go buy a dozen roses at Stop &amp; Shop. But I can't buy that same dozen roses at Wallingford Flower Shop because they're closed. You know, I'm going to run into 200 people maybe at Stop &amp; Shop, Wallingford Flower, maybe one or two, you know. So little consistency. And that's something where Mr. Civitelli could, you know, perhaps opine and say, well, you know, there's such a reduced risk here. You know, I would allow this business to open. That's just a suggestion. So, to, you know, something like that.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helps clear it up for me. Thank you.
Counselor Tessa.
Well, thank you. And I, my, my original request to speak was based on my confusion regarding the motion. Counselor Fishbine has clarified. Thank you. My, my read on this is we would ask the town attorney to draft a resolution, which would have to come back to us for approval if we want to call it a resolution. Basically, come up with language. So basically, it's, you want us to send a formal request to the governor asking that we be authorized to make local decisions on business openings rather than having the business openings adhere to the guidelines that the governor's put out in his executive orders. Is that an accurate read?
I'm going. I don't see it as being that conflicting with the governor's orders. I guess perfect world, the governor would do an executive order that allows something like that. Not to say that, you know, the governor says that all flower shops, all retail is closed and that in, in the face of that, the health director has the ability to overstep the governor. That is not the intent at all, if that clears that up. So it's, it's, it would call for, in perfect world, a subsequent executive order because the governor has done this with certain things. You know, loosening the shackles, so to speak, to allow more local decision. That's all.
Okay. All right. I, I think I'm following you. The I think what I, what I had heard was earlier that let's just say in this particular set of guidelines that would take place June 20th, these are, they're going to come into play on June 20th, let's say. And you're asking, well, if there are businesses that already meet those criteria and our health director or someone else could verify that they are, we want to be able to allow those businesses to open now as opposed to when the order currently allows. as opposed to when the order currently allows them to open. That's what I had read or what I'd heard earlier. In other words, I know what you're saying. You're not just saying we want to override whatever the governor says. Okay, I'm happy to hear that. If we were to draft a resolution requesting that the governor consider, as you just put it, a subsequent executive order that gives local authorities a little bit more control over that yes or no decision, provided their businesses are adhering to the guidelines. I can understand that. And I could contemplate that and I can make a decision on that. Does that sound like what you're asking for?
Yes, yes, very generally, yes.
Okay, so it's a resolution, I'm almost done with the chairman. So it's a resolution asking the governor, similar to what the mayor did, asking the governor to reconsider. And if that's the limit of this, I can wrap my head around that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the back and forth allowance, if you will. I'm all set.
Thank you. Mr. Civitelli, can we hear from you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to interject really quickly. In terms of more local control, as the president-elect for the Connecticut Association for Directors of Health, we had requested to be part of that initial reopening Connecticut group, and we were left off. So that's why I think there wasn't as much local representation on that panel. In terms of our advice to, in talking to Dr. Menzo, who's been very great, we have basically just stuck with follow the law as it reads. The Department of Education has provided three examples of what could be done for graduations as of now. I understand that if it gets pushed out further, there may be more opportunities to expand those options. And I think that unfortunately, this is something that we're not used to. We're more reactive to what the state government is doing as opposed to being proactive, which I think many of us are used to doing, where we try and do what works best within the framework and what we know is in the best health, you know, of the public. So from our standpoint, maintaining and working within the law that's in the orders that have been passed and providing the most, you know, paramount is public health overall. So however this looks in the end, we're going to try and, we're going to make sure that public health is protected. So that's just what I want to chime in.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, make, have no doubt, businesses are furious with the inconsistencies in the way that the executive orders have been, you know, pushed down. And I don't want to make this political and I don't want to make this an outward criticism. But I'm not suggesting that because businesses are upset that there's any license to be reckless. What I'm suggesting is that we have a professional health director that early on, if I recall, said 97% of the fatalities are in nursing homes and extended care facilities, which suggests to me that Wallingford is a very, very low-risk environment. And again, I am not a health professional, okay? So I respect the comments that have been made earlier. But, you know, employment, everything starts with employment. An economy cannot thrive or survive without it. Personal relationships are being negatively impacted because people don't have incomes. Families are being negatively impacted because people don't have incomes. And I think that what I've heard in this commentary from our, again, healthcare professionals is that, I mean, we're ready. Let's do it responsibly. The governor will seek to it. He has laid out the groundwork to do this, and if we can adhere to that groundwork now, why not? So I say to myself, why is Wallingford any different? And that would be the argument that I think we need to make in Harvard. Oh, why is Wallingford different? Well, because the cases that we've had, the lion's share, 97% of the fatalities are in nursing facilities. I mean, I just, I think we can open businesses responsibly. I think Mr. Fishbein makes some very good points. Why is it you can buy flowers at Stop &amp; Shop and not at Wallingford Flower Shop? And that is one of, you can do a dozen examples like that. It's like, you know, I'm listening to the healthcare professionals, as I think we should. And ours is saying that he believes that we can, with proper oversight, we can administer responsible opening of businesses, and I think we got to do it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Counselor Laughlin.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm actually, I'm interested in seeing what kind of wording comes back. I know this has to come back around to us anyway. This isn't sending off the message right now. And I do usually, I always say that Wallingford, we do a better, right? At least keeping it local. So I do, I do want to see where we could go with how this has evolved since this issue first came up. So right now I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've seen an interest in commenting from member of the public Jessica Wasaki. You've typed your comments into the chat bar. Do you want them, do you want me to read them? Or do you, would you like to make comments yourself?
Hi, Vinnie, you could read them for me if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is from Jessica Wasaki, 352 Grebe Road. She said she supports the town legal department questioning the governor's oversight and taking legal action if necessary. And then says she supports more local oversight over COVID mandates through the legal department, the health department, the economic development department, and everyone else appropriate. She would like to see the process be more democratic by exercising more local voices. Counselor Morgenstein, do you have a motion?
I'd like to question.
Counselor Morgenstein has moved to call the question. Is there a second? While there is no second, there also appears to be no further comment. So I'm going to take the opportunity to call the vote on the motion.
Okay. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughlin?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
No.
Chertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
I am going to, I'm going to vote yes on this with the understanding that we're going to be asking the governor to reconsider some of the executive orders in order to allow towns exercise more local control in accordance with guidelines that the state has issued. And that would, that is what I will, I'm not going to object to that because it's an expression of support for our local businesses, while at the same time acknowledging that we are still under the guidance of executive orders issued by the governor. And I do not want to see the towns handling things differently. And I was going off in another direction. And I'm sorry, but I needed to explain my yes on this. Thank you.
Okay. Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes, just to speak to Counselor Testa's comments. This isn't the final say here. It's going to come back to us for review. As a matter of fact, we do have a meeting scheduled for June 2nd. And I'm going to have a conversation with the Law Department and see if this can be addressed in time for addition to one of those agendas. Oh. With that, we have no further business for the public portions of our meeting. And so I'm going to end this portion of the meeting. I want to thank all the department heads who participated, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Civitelli, for sticking it out through the end, and the members of the Board of Education for speaking up on this particular last issue. But I'm going to close this meeting. And in about five minutes, we will reconvene in executive session. That being said, it appears that we may have to come back to this meeting for item 12. So I'm going to ask the clerk to stand by.
I can write it down.
I can stay. Do you want me to stay? Do I just stay on here?
Your head just collapsed.
I know.
If you wouldn't mind staying on this meeting, then...
So I just stay on the screen. I don't touch anything.
Yeah, we will all leave. We'll go into executive session. And if we're not going to come back to you, I will let you know that.
By text. Okay, I'll just mute myself in case I say something bad.
Vinnie, if you or I leave the meeting, she gets booted.
Do you think so?
This conference is no longer being recorded.